Welcome, everybody. Hi there. I'm Kathy McClelland. I am with Neighbors for a Better San Diego. Neighbors for a Better San Diego is an all-volunteer, grassroots, nonprofit organization dedicated to bringing the public back into the discussion about urban development in San Diego. In other words, we really want you to have a say in your future. One of our major goals is public awareness, so it is our goal to enhance your understanding of the issues that are important in San Diego. And to that end, we are very happy to be able to host this forum tonight. So we want to thank our esteemed candidates, who not only accepted our invitation, but showed up tonight.[62.59][62.59][applause] And to you guys who came out on a cold, blustery, possibly rainy evening, thank you to the audience for coming.[74.59][74.59][applause] And to the amazing League of Women Voters, who have inspired us, mentored us, and collaborated with us on hosting this event tonight. So I would like to introduce you now to Sheila Toll, who is the League of Women Voters' moderator for this evening.[96.42][96.42][applause]
Good evening. My name is Sheila Toll. I'm a proud member of the League of Women Voters. I will be your moderator.
Can I draw a picture?
I will be your moderator. Can you hear me now? Are you good?
No.
Okay. So I will be the moderator for this evening's candidate forum for the City of San Diego, District 9. Okay? We would like to thank our host, Neighbors for a Better San Diego. We would also like to thank the candidates for attending. And most importantly, we would like to thank all of you for coming and becoming an informed voter. The League is proud to be nonpartisan. We neither support nor oppose candidates or political parties, but we always are working on vital issues of concern to our members and to the public. It's probably important for you to know that I do not live in this district, so I am definitely nonpartisan. Okay? As part of our mission to educate voters, we are pleased to present this candidate forum. It's an opportunity for you all to ask questions that you care about the most, and a chance for the candidates to explain their positions. Okay? This is not a debate between them. This is a question and answer. Okay? We will be using the League of Women Voters format for this forum. The candidates have all agreed to that format in advance. So a little bit about how this is going to work. The candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement. They will also then have two minutes for a closing statement, and in between those two, we'll be asking questions that you guys have written on cards, and they'll have one minute to answer the questions. We have Gail Viomond, who's a member of the League. She will be our timekeeper. Okay?[217.12][217.12][laughter] So put her front and center there. Okay? So she'll be keeping us on track. She'll be helping the candidates so that they always know how much time they have left. Okay? The most important part of this forum is hearing from you and the questions you may have for candidates. Some of you have written out questions you had coming in, but we have our League pages, Sarah O'Leary and Wendy Young. Can you raise your hands right there? They will pass out more index cards and pens, so please write your questions down on the cards. Raise them in the air, and they'll come and pick them up and bring them over here. There will be no verbal questions from the floor. Okay? All the questions need to be written down on cards. I'd recommend that you write them in a pretty general way. If it's a yes or no answer, we're not going to have a conversation. Keep your questions to the point. Lengthy preambles, I'm not going to read, because we want to kind of have as many questions as possible. You can ask as many questions as you'd like, just do one per card. Okay? And if you are asking a question to one candidate, we will ask that question at the end of all the questions that are for all the candidates. Okay? And please remember to use civility and respect when you're wording your question. Okay? The questions then are given to my question screeners. They are League members, Kim Knox, who's in the middle, Denise Vedder on the side, and then Jeff Hutter from Neighbors for a Better San Diego. Okay? They screen the questions. They organize them into categories. We try and get as many different categories asked, so, and so far, we've done a pretty good job. If the questions are not in the purview of a city council person, then we won't ask them. Okay? So in addition to asking very good questions, you have responsibility for making this forum a success. We ask a few things. Please hold your applause until the forum is finished. Okay? This allows us to ask more questions. Since the candidate forum is designed to provide nonpartisan setting for undecided voters to hear all the positions, we would appreciate it if you would avoid demonstrations of support or opposition to either the candidates or their answers. Okay? Unheeded warnings may result in the cancellation of the forum, which would be a total bummer. Okay? So we are ready to begin. Opening statements. We will begin with candidate Hila Rivera. Two minutes.
All right. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Shawnee LaRivera, and I've been very proud to be the council member representing San Diego's 9th Council District since December of 2020. We stepped into office during a really tough time, and I'll talk more about that later. But I ran for office prioritizing what came from my heart based on my values, and that was doing more to address the housing and homelessness crisis, doing more to advance environmental justice in our community, doing more to create safety and justice for people of all backgrounds, and doing more to expand opportunity for people of all backgrounds. And while we have not reached our goals in each area, not even close, I am proud of the work that we've done in those areas. We've done a lot to advance tenant protections, strengthening them after 20 years of no progress on that front. We created a program to prevent homelessness, especially for seniors, children, and people with disabilities. We've strengthened rules against pollution. We've seen violent crime go down, and we've created an internship program in San Diego that's brought hundreds of young people into our program, and we've made San Diego a good place to work again. So while there is lots of work to do, I'm proud of what we've done in incredibly hard times. Those hard times include just a couple weeks ago when floods created a disaster here in San Diego, less than five minutes down the street. Fifty-seven apartments, affordable apartments, wiped out. And we have a lot of work to do to provide those folks the support that they need and they deserve, and everyone in the city needs and deserves to get to where we want to go. I think we're making progress. I think we can do more, and I'm very, very much looking forward to another four years of being able to do that. Thank you.
Okay. The second opening statement will be Mr. Hoskins.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me? I want to thank the League of Women Voters and Neighbors for a Better San Diego and the CROC Center for hosting, and thank everyone for attending. To those who don't know me, I'm Dr. Terry Hoskins. I'm a retired Marine, retired San Diego police officer. My two careers, I've been making tough decisions and challenging ones the entire time. My careers have been successful. My careers have taught me accountability. Our recent floods have brought to attention we need some accountability. It seems like our elected officials has cared more for Ash Street, bike lanes, sexy streets, instead of focusing on our infrastructure. Our infrastructure is total neglect. Experience I bring to District 9 is a realization that I have worked in this community for over 14-plus years. I've stood on every street, every sidewalk. I've been in every canyon, every creek, and every stream. I've heard your complaints, your concerns, and seen your frustrations with our elected officials. I've worked alongside many of you, sweating. I help provide real solutions to real situations. As a police officer, I worked 14 and a half years patrolling our streets, responding to our 911 calls and our non-emergency calls. The last nine years, I was your community relations officer. I worked with you correcting quality of life issues, and I will continue to do so. Thank you.
And the third opening statement, candidate Garcia.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out. Actually, I'm going to switch to this one.[641.16][641.16][laughing] This is amazing, by the way, and thank you to the League of Women Voters, and thank you to Neighbors for a Better San Diego. I'm running to represent the people of District 9. I'm running to listen to the people of District 9, and I'm running to serve the people of District 9. I'm not running to represent big donors, I'm not running to represent big developers. I'm not even running to represent a political party. I'm a father, I'm a husband, I'm a San Diego State graduate, and I'm a small business owner. The one thing that I've learned about being a small business owner is that when you put the customer first, you will have a successful business. Our elected officials have forgotten that. You are the customer that we're supposed to serve, but you also can't blame them. Most of them have never had a real job.[694.82][694.82][laughing] So that is why they create policy with good ideas, but with wrong implementation. They do not have the real-world experience to understand the unintended consequences of their policies. That is why we choose to invest in bike lanes and not in storm drains. That is why we do real estate deals like 101 Ash Street. It's why we enable homelessness instead of empowering people to get off the streets, and it's why we are overdeveloping rather than supporting our neighborhoods. I'm running because you are my political party. The community is my political party. Thank you.
Okay. Our first question. We will start with Mr. Hoskins. How do we get transit -- this is a two-part one, just to let you know. We're going to start tough. How do we get transit-oriented development to be actually oriented next to transit, such as along University Avenue and El Cajon Boulevard? And how far is it reasonable to expect people to walk to and from transit?
It turns out that there's eight vacant lots on El Cajon Boulevard, from 70th Street all the way to the 805. If you want to put density where people are going to use mass transit, you put it along mass corridors. No one is going to walk a mile to a bus stop. I wouldn't. You wouldn't. No one's going to ride a bicycle to a department store. When it was raining, I didn't see anybody on bicycles in the bike lanes. I saw people driving. But if you want to have density and we use mass transportation, put it on corridors. Thank you.
Okay. Next, candidate Garcia.
So I think this is where me and Terry pretty much agree on. We need to build on our major corridors. What we need to do is we need to target commercial and abandoned buildings, and if we're going to encourage them to build, they need to build up. And if we're going to incentivize anybody to do it, we need to take a look at how high they can build, and if they're willing to do that, and we put a timeframe to say, hey, if you do it by this date, you're going to get a property tax incentives to do that. We want people to build where they're close to transit, on the transit corridors. The numbers are out there. Ninety-two percent of people who take public transit only live within half a mile. That's a fact. The research is already done. And if you want to promote transit, the missing link for that mile is self-driving cars. So if we want to start to live, rather than live like the Flintstones and live like the Jetsons, I think we need to start bringing self-driving cars to bring people to transit from that mile away. That's the part that we're missing, and do it in a safe way. Thank you.
Thank you. We actually all agree to a certain extent on this, and that is that we do need more housing in transit areas. How we do that is, I have a similar answer, we incentivize that sort of construction. I have proposed being even more aggressive and having the city purchase some of those vacant properties and abandoned buildings, so that we can actually assert the city's will on those properties and not leave it in the hands of the private market to hope that they will build what we want them to build. And I actually think that we can really get that done. In terms of how far folks are willing to go, it is not true that nobody will walk a mile. People who have to walk a mile will. We know that most people, a half-mile is the ideal distance, and we know that we can create networks, such as the shuttles that we are bringing to City Heights, that will actually connect people to transit even if they live a little bit more than a half-mile away. We're already doing some of this work. We need to do more, but it is not a fantasy to believe that we can connect folks to transit even if they're outside that half-mile.
Okay. This question will start with candidate Garcia. How can people afford another slash new infrastructure tax in this economy? What are other options for funding?
Right. So here's the thing. We have, the first thing we need to do as elected officials is to recognize that we have a problem, and we can't kick the can down the road, because when we kick the can down the road, it shows up in a flood, and that's what we just saw. Now, the fact of the matter is, we cannot, in good conscience, ask the taxpayer for more money when we mishandle the money we are to receive.[1000.63][1000.63][applause] So if we are going to ask for more money, we-
Excuse me a second. Again, please hold any applause. We've got a lot of undecided voters in here, and we'd really like to make sure that everything kind of stays under control. Okay? Continue.
Okay.
Give it back like 15 seconds.
So if we are going to ask for more money, in any way, shape, or form, we need to show the taxpayer where we're going to save elsewhere. And the one thing I propose, if we're going to cut anywhere, it needs to be at the city council and mayor's salary. Now, I know my wife doesn't like to hear that, but if we're going to ask anybody to cut, we need to cut our own pay, to show that we, as a leadership, understand that we're in this together. So, thank you.
Okay. Next, candidate Hila Rivera.
Folks, there's no politician around who wants to tell people they need to pay more. That is a fact. I know that. But more important than telling you what you want to hear is telling you what you need to hear, and that is, for generations, San Diego has been underfunded. That's not my math. That is every analyst's math who's looked at the issue. San Diego has the second-biggest road network in the state of California. We have, Los Angeles has the largest. Los Angeles has 66% more revenue on a per capita basis than the city of San Diego. Politicians in San Diego have not been honest with you. They've told you things like, it's politician salaries and librarian salaries and the trash drivers' retirement that is preventing you from having the roads that you need. That is not the case. The city needs dedicated revenue for infrastructure and stormwater. People have been saying it for three decades. Politicians have ignored it because the hard thing to do is to tell you that. I'm not going to lie to you.
This question will start with -- oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So I think Shawne and myself will agree with something, and that is politicians have not been telling you the honest truth. We do not need more taxes. We do not need an infrastructure tax. We need accountability, is what we need. Before we go asking for more money, we need to find out where our money has spent and where it went to. Proposition H, several years ago, dedicated a certain amount of money for infrastructure. Our council voted to take that money, however little it may be, and put it towards something else, not infrastructure. Why would we want to give money to an organization that are not accountable for their actions? Thank you.
Okay. The next question will start with candidate Hila Rivera. What is your opinion of San Diego's strong mayor system of government?
In 60 seconds?[1190.24][1190.24][laughing] Frustrating, as a council member, oftentimes. I understand the value of it, and I think it's important to have the chief executive of the city be directly accountable to the voters. And as a council member, it makes things tough sometimes. I'd love to be able to call and say, fix the pothole down the street, or turn the streetlight on for the person who's called me 100 times asking for their streetlight to be turned on. Those are not the powers that the council has. And so rather than me focus on what I would like the system to be, I'm trying to operate within the system that we have, and that means the city council owning its power as a legislative body, as a budgetary authority, as the housing authority, and really leaning in in those ways, running a legislative process that empowers the council. And I think we're doing that. So I can be frustrated with the system, I can want it to change, but I also have to work with reality, and I think we're doing that.
Okay. Next, we'll have candidate Garcia.
Yeah. So the strong mayor system is not working for us here in San Diego, and I think we all know that. But we have to live in the world that we have. The reality is, if you have a council member in this type of system, they need to be willing to take on the mayor and not be the mayor's best friend. Okay? My job, when I'm elected, is I have no fear in taking on that mayor. And if they do not do what is right for District 9, I have no problem taking it to the media and pleading that case and getting them out. I represent you. I don't care if the mayor's trying to use it as a stepping stone to another elected office. I'm going to represent you and not the mayor, and I'm going to fight for you. Thank you.
And candidate Hoskins.
Thank you. Yeah, the strong mayor system is not working and has not worked. You have to be able to stand up to someone that's in a higher office, and you must have the moral courage to look him in the eye and say you don't agree with him. By just trying to wiggle the system, if the system isn't working, then something has to be done. Whether you go down and you talk to the directors themselves and be the voice for the people, someone has to be your voice. It's not the job of a staffer to be your voice. It's the job of your council member to be your voice. Too many times, that has not happened. When I am your council member, I will serve you, I will be your voice, and you don't know if the mayor and I don't get along, because it'd be in the media.[1365.51][1365.51][laughing]
Next question, and we'll start with candidate Hoskins on this one. Do you believe the city should enact a zero eviction ordinance, and why?
Absolutely not. First of all, with decisions has to come accountability. Most of our mom-and-pops that own small apartments, they can't make it under these rules. We hurt them. We didn't hurt big, you know, operations that are making 300-plus apartments. We're hurting the mom-and-pops. That's small businesses. We're hurting small businesses and our own, and San Diego as a whole. Now, I don't know about you, I've never been evicted. I'm not saying that it doesn't happen. Of course it does. But no-fault eviction? I've never seen it. I worked 14 and a half years going, working with property owners, trying to help evict people when they should be evicted. No, I will not support that at all. Thank you.
Okay. Next, candidate Hila Rivera.
I've never heard of a complete ban on evictions. Folks need to pay their rent. That's fair. They need to abide by the terms of their lease. That's all fair. And when they're doing those things, they shouldn't live in fear of losing their home. And that's the San Diego that we had until we passed our tenant protection ordinance. Following the rules, paying your rent, doing nothing wrong, and your landlord could tell you you have to go elsewhere. And they could do that, and they could move somebody else in, and they could charge twice as much for rent. And every analyst who looked at it said that this is one of the reasons why rent is skyrocketing in San Diego. It's a, not the, but a cause of homelessness. So we took action. We took it on. We made a lot of people really mad at us, and that's fine, because the industry that was mad and the property owners who have the privilege of owning many, many homes were mad at me. But my job is to protect people, and it is undoubtedly true that tenants in San Diego are better off now than they were before, and we did it in collaboration with industry at the end of the day. I'm very proud of that and would do it all over again.
Okay. And candidate Garcia.
So in terms of a zero eviction, no, absolutely, that's the wrong idea. Here in California, we need to bring balance. Of course, we need tenant protection, but they can't just all be towards the tenant. You have to protect the landlord as well, and the reason being is because bad tenants take away housing from good tenants. It's the bad tenants that charge the landlord, and where the landlord has to pick up the rent and increase it so that everybody else has to pay for it. It's not fair. If you're not paying your rent, there's taken years and years to get people out of apartments they're not paying for. That's uncalled for, and that just makes us have to pay for it. So zero eviction, no. Am I for having some tenant rights? Absolutely. You shouldn't just throw somebody out in the street. That's inhumane. But to not have any protections for the landlord, that's ridiculous, because bad tenants take away housing from good tenants. Thank you.
Okay. Next question, candidate Garcia. When housing developers are required to build affordable units, should these units be onsite or elsewhere in the city, and why?
Yeah. So absolutely onsite. I mean, to put it elsewhere, to build and say, I'm going to go build in La Jolla, and then I'm going to go put the affordable units in Logan Heights, it's just another way of redlining. I mean, it's ridiculous. You can't have that. So, and we can't just be giving away the farm to developers. I want to build just as much as anybody else. Okay? But people want to build in San Diego. We don't have to give away the kitchen sink. We can be smart, we can encourage growth, we can speed up permitting, we can make it easy to build, but to say to these developers and just give everything away and allow them to put housing, affordable housing in other areas, that's a giveaway to the developers and does not help the community and does not help the people who need the housing the most. So, yeah, I'm against it.
Okay. Candidate Hoskins.
Yes, I'm totally against that. I don't know why we even do that to begin with. We haven't redlined since the '50s, so now we're starting to do it all over again. We are treating our big developers like they have, you know, the upper hand. We automatically don't do development impact fees. They get that from themselves. And who takes the burden from that? Who has to pay that when developers don't? Look around. You do, not the developers. You pay that. So when I'm elected, immediately, we're going to start, we're going to do away with developers not paying impact fees. That's ridiculous. Thank you.
Okay. And candidate Hila Rivera.
My preference is that it be onsite, and I want affordable homes built. And what we learned is that by allowing offsite in certain situations, we can get more affordable homes built quicker. The way that affordable financing works is extremely complex. There's no single source of funding. Oftentimes, it's 40 or 50 different sources of funding, and by allowing offsite, we can allow the money that would have been used on that affordable onsite development to be the finishing financing for a project that otherwise won't get built. So I love onsite in theory, but more than onsite in theory, I like affordable homes in reality. And I want to make something clear. The situation that was described up here is not a real one. There is no offsighting from La Jolla to Logan Heights. I was dead-set against that and didn't allow for it. I shut the policy down when we were even inching toward that. There is room for onsite as long as we keep it within certain opportunity areas. Again, I can have my preferences, but it's important to me to not only lead with values, but lead with values that are tied to pragmatism, and we did that with the policy that we passed in December.
This question will start with candidate Hila Rivera. How would you address the lack of parking at the College Rolando Library?[1770.36][1770.36][laughing] Very local question.
So there's how would I and how we are, and we are working as closely as we can with community to try to find multiple options in terms of parking for the folks at the College Rolando Library. I love libraries. Love libraries. They were a very important part of my childhood. They're going to be an important part of my son's childhood, and I want to make sure that they're accessible to people- son's childhood, and I wanna make sure that they're accessible to people young and old. And I know that parking's a piece of that, but I also don't think there's only one way to do it. And so I've encouraged community to be creative in partnership with our office. I've told planning, and the mayor, and everybody else at the city that it's extremely important to me that we be creative about how we provide parking opportunities for folks so that that library remains accessible. And we'll continue to work on that because it's super, super important to us. I also don't think that there's only one way to do it. I think we can be creative, I think we can replace, our fearing will be lost, and there will be very minimal impact at the end of the day.
Candidate Huskins.
Yeah, first of all, for the 14 and a half years I was a police officer, I remember working that area when the Lutheran church was there. I remember arresting people for homelessness that was burglarizing the church, breaking into their security boxes. When the new property owner tore it all down, I worked for them to remove the homeless that was around it and on site of it, inside his own fence area. I will do anything I can to support the Rolando College Library. I've talked to kids in there, I've held classes in there, that's an amazing, amazing facility. What's happening is being hijacked. It should not happen. So if that means you have to take away permits, then you do so. We cannot allow that library to be vacant because some developer wants friggin' parking.
Candidate Garcia.
Now, what a debacle that the city council messed up with not buying that parking when they should have. This is why it's so important for city council to listen to the constituents, to listen to planning groups. Without parking, there is no library, period. Nobody will go to the library if there's no parking. If that developer wants to build, they need to include parking, or they don't get any permits. Libraries are essential. I was a young father. The place I took my son was the library, because it was free. So if we wanna instill that and keep that around, we need parking so that parents can take their kids, communities can come together and have meetings, and that's what libraries bring to communities. So if they don't honor our parking, they don't get that permit. Simple as that. Thank you.
Okay, next question, and we'll start with candidate Huskins. Do you accept campaign contributions from YIMBY, so yes-in-my-backyard groups, or from the building industry and developers? And if yes, how much?
That's a no. First of all, I have somewhat of a code of honor, of honor, working with the military and SDPD, and I do not accept money from organizations that I don't agree with. Just to accept money to have it is not what I do. I am not for YIMBIs. I protested with the group on El Combe Boulevard and College Avenue when one of their housing commissioners pretended to be one of us and had a sign that was saying, "We didn't like renters, go away." He was in our group, he's a commissioner on the Housing Association, and he was there to make us look bad. I do not support that at all. Thank you.
Okay, and next candidate Garcia.
Yeah, so I don't take any donations from YIMBIs, NIMBIs, any kind of B's.
I'll take NIMBIs.
And just so you know, for those, you know, yes-in-my-backyard, no-in-my-backyard. And, you know, here's the problem with using those acronyms. They're really built to divide us. Okay? I'm here to bring us together and to come to a reasonable conclusion of how we should build in our neighborhoods by listening to you, by listening to the planning groups and say, hey, where should we build? Where can we build? I'm not trying to impose my ideology on you, I want you to tell me how you want your neighborhood to look like. So, yeah, I'm not taking donations really from pretty much nobody, really. But send them my way if you want, so thank you.
Candidate Ela Rivera.
Yeah, so the question, just to make sure we are all on the same page, those contributions aren't allowed by campaign finance rules. So I understand what folks are getting at, but we can't accept, there's no organizations that are contributing to any of our campaigns unless it's a party contribution. So let's just be clear about what the rules are. It's easy to score some points on this one. And I will gladly accept contributions from folks who want more inclusive and welcoming communities. I will gladly accept support from folks who believe that neighborhoods should have a space for people of all backgrounds and all income levels in every single neighborhood. Those are my friends, those are folks who wanna create a more inclusive future, not a more exclusive future, and I could not be more proud to have those folks as my friends. They are trying to create a more inclusive world, where folks, again, from all backgrounds, have a space in all neighborhoods. I think it's a beautiful, beautiful thing, and I'm proud that those are my friends, I'm proud that they're supporting my campaign, and I will never, ever turn them away from supporting me.
This next question, we'll start with candidate Garcia. How do you propose to pay for needed infrastructure, since the city is waiving development fees to encourage affordable housing?
Yeah, so if we're gonna waive any type of fee, number one, it's gotta be targeted and specific. I'm not a fan of giveaways to developers, I've said it already. People wanna develop in San Diego, so we don't have to give away the kitchen sink. And then what we need to do is we need to look at the budget and start taking a look at where we're wasting money. Because trust me, 101 Ash Street, we're wasting money. There are other areas where we can cut, and that's exactly what we need to do. One of the advantages that I've noticed with the planning groups is there are a lot of retirees with a lot of knowledge, who care about their community, who wanna help and find these areas where we're overspending and how we can do better. I want your assistance, I want your help, because we need to find where we can make things better, where we can get the money. And so I'm not a fan of any new taxes, because until we do a better job of what we're receiving, I don't think we should ask the taxpayer for anything more. So, thank you.
Okay, next candidate, Ela Rivera.
Again, there's an easy politically opportunistic answer to this, and there's the truth. The opportunistic answer is, I would never support a new tax, and you won't pay a dollar more if I continue to be your council member. And while I might hold that position, I would be lying to you if I told you that that could be connected in any world whatsoever to you having the infrastructure that you want. We need dedicated revenue for the infrastructure that we need. That's, and let's be honest, let's be real about this, that's an unfortunate reality that results from years of underinvestment in our infrastructure and not bringing in the revenue that we need. But we are where we are, and sometimes we like to oversimplify our city budget and pretend like it's a household budget. Sometimes, we need to make more money. Sometimes, I've had to get a second job or a third job, because it's just simply not enough to pay for the things that need to get done. And the city of San Diego is not bringing in enough revenue to pay our workers right and take care of the infrastructure that we need.
Candidate Huskins.
Yeah, first of all, my word is my bond. So if I tell you I will not vote for any new taxes, I will not support that. Now, the other eight council members may, but I will not. We need to have a complete oversight of our spending in the city, to see what are we spending money on? Because we apparently aren't very fiduciary responsible with our money system. So the first thing, before we do anything, we need to find out where our money is and what we're spending it on. Ash Street, bike lanes, those are not cutting it. You don't like it, we don't like it. They like it, but we don't. So we need to figure out where that money's going, we need to stop it, we need to get a reality check, because that hasn't happened in a while. And again, I will not support new taxes, period.
Okay, this next question will start with candidate Ela Rivera. It's a question around the city auditor. Your thoughts on the city auditor being appointed by the city council versus being elected by the people?
Yeah, the city auditor does an outstanding job for the city of San Diego. The reports that that office produces on a regular basis have been incredibly valuable and have been searing in their critiques of the mayor, the city attorney, and at times the council. Right now, the city attorney has some strong feelings about the city auditor because he was so searing in his critique of the way the 101 Ash Street went down. And since then, there's a target on the city auditor's back, and there's an attempt to change the system. We have an outstanding auditing office, they produce reports on a myriad of issues, those guide our decision-making, they've led to some very important changes. So I'm not trying to fire our auditor, I think he's doing an outstanding job, and we shall all be grateful for the independence that they've shown and continue to show on a regular basis.
Candidate Garcia.
So the city auditor needs to be accountable to you. They are the ones who audit city council and city hall. So you should be the one to vote them in. They are not the ones who are gonna be accountable or should be appointed by the mayor or the city council, because guess who they're beholden to? Their boss, which is gonna be the mayor and the city council. You should be their boss and only beholden to you. Everything that my campaign is about is about putting more power in your hands, not ours. You make better decisions than we do, and that is exactly what I'm looking to do. Thank you.
Candidate Huskins.
When someone is elected, they are accountable to the people who elect them. When someone is appointed, they are accountable to the person or people who appoint them. I am for the city auditor being elected. If not, when I grew up, it was kinda like, you're gonna let the fox guard the hen house. No, you're not. Anyone can play with numbers. Anyone that has any ability like that, they can make things look the way you want it to look. So I can make something look the way my boss wants it to look. I don't want that. I don't think you want that. Accountability. I think if anything else I hope you see up here is accountability has to happen from your elected officials, and that's one of them, he should be elected.
Okay, the next question, we're gonna start with candidate Huskins. How do you plan to address the flooding and infrastructure issues that resulted in the flooding of Choyes Creek and other areas?
So our budget, according to Proposition H, doesn't fund the infrastructure to clean all 200 of our channels. I guess we, I learned last night, we clean four channels a year. Which 12 channels have we cleaned? If I knew that Choyes Creek, Village Green Apartments, which is in Rolando Park, not Rolando, if I knew that flooded 12 years ago, and I could only clean so many channels, that would be my priority. I would voice that. I would make that known. And if, and if for some reason that organization, Stormwater, wouldn't do it, I'd make it go public. That shouldn't have happened. Their victims are negligent, and it should not happen.
Candidate Ela Rivera.
To resource the system in the way that it needs to be in order to provide the services that folks, the services and the infrastructure that we need. There's two parts of that. There's the physical infrastructure, which, as I've said before, we need dedicated revenue for, and it also means hiring and retaining the workforce necessary to do that work. We've done the latter, or taken great strides on that front. One of the things I am most proud of about my time as a council member is the ways that we've increased wages, brought pensions back, and made San Diego a good place to work again. We cannot have city work done without city workers. I'm so, so proud that we've taken strides to address the attack on city workers that happened over the previous decade, and that in conjunction with dedicated revenue for the hard infrastructure is how we actually get this done. So we've got part one rolling, we need to get part two flowing as well, and then we can actually see a modern, world-class infrastructure system like San Diego deserves.
Candidate Garcia.
Yeah, so the flooding was a travesty, but it was not a surprise. The hurricane warning, that was a surprise. That was crazy, but the flooding was not. People had been talking about this for years. And guess where it happened? In the poorest of our neighborhoods. The people who cannot bounce back. That's by design, by the way, people. Those neighborhoods, they don't contribute to big campaigns. So guess who gets the least amount of funding? It's those people. I'm not part of a political organization, I'm an independent because of that. I'm here to represent everybody in my district, whether you're rich or whether you're poor. So we're gonna make sure that those who are less fortunate are taken care of, because we need to prioritize them, because they cannot bounce back the way that some of us can. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna start this one with candidate Garcia. State law allows one accessory dwelling unit per single-family parcel, while San Diego's bonus ADU program allows an unlimited number of ADUs. What are your thoughts about whether San Diego's code should match the state code?
Yeah, so I'm gonna kinda go a little deeper into this one. First of all, when it comes to SB 10, I'm against it. The bonus ADU program is a joke. It's not designed to help the people or the residents of San Diego, it's designed to help developers, pure and simple. Okay? And I think actually ADUs can be helpful to bring in housing. One unit, I think, is plenty. And not only that, I'm tired of giving tax breaks and incentives to developers. Let's give tax breaks and incentives to the residents of San Diego who decide to build an ADU and actually afford, and actually decide to rent it at affordable units, at affordable rent. They sign a contract saying they're gonna do that, we're gonna give them a tax break. And you know what? One of the things I wanna do to supercharge that is if they build an ADU, and they live in the back ADU, and decide to open up that front house to a family at affordable rates, we're gonna supercharge that tax credit. Okay? So let's start helping people, residents, with the tax credits and not developers. Thank you.
Candidate Huskins.
Yeah, I, you know, the ADUs is not what it's designed for. If you look at what the ADUs were when it first came out, and what it is now, the council has totally just destroyed that concept. If we were to revert back to what the state is, that would be way better than what we are right now. All this is, is for developers. Just point that, that's it, it's a developer thing. We're letting them develop, we're not holding fees, they're getting permits way faster than my neighbor who's trying to work on his house. Have you heard that? Oh, yeah. Developers are getting their permits rapidly, but you're not. No. ADUs, we just destroyed that concept. It's no longer granny flats, we just destroyed it. Thank you.
Candidate Ela Rivera.
No, I don't think that we should simply have what the state has. I believe in increasing housing opportunities for people of all income levels and all backgrounds and all neighborhoods. And the ADU program, as imperfect as it is, is a way of doing that. For every bonus unit that is built, there is a unit that is built that provides a housing opportunity to someone who would almost certainly not otherwise be able to afford to live in that community.
Let's keep your, let's keep our reactions to ourselves.
So not liking the change that we see is different than not producing the outcomes that we say it's producing. There are technical definitions to these things, folks, and we all agree that the rent is too high. We all agree on that. But there is a fact that when there's a bonus unit built, there is another unit built that would otherwise not be there, and that unit is a home to a person who is going to appreciate living there and would not be able to live there otherwise.
Okay, the next question, we'll start with candidate Ela Rivera. What effort would you make to restore front yard parking violations to a priority-level citation as opposed to an alternative compliance letter?
We're working on that, so this is a huge issue in the college area. We've convened a working group for two and a half years that- We've convened a working group for two and a half years that brought, that brought San Diego Police Department, San Diego City staff, San Diego State Police Department, and San Diego State Staff together for the first time. And that's been incredibly important. They've parsed out jurisdictional confusion that they had, where folks didn't know where one jurisdiction ended and somebody else's began. And they're working in partnership to address some of these quality of life issues. But let's be clear about something. We can change the rules, but if we don't have the city workers necessary to enforce those rules, then there's no point in having those rules. So the most important thing that we can do, obviously, is make some rules changes, but much more important than that, is ensuring that we have the city workers that we need. That means paying them well, means providing them a solid retirement, that means making San Diego a great place to work again so folks want to have a career in San Diego rather than it just being the launching pad for their public work.
Candidate Hoskins.
I would be completely upset if my neighbor parked in his yard. I tell you right now, I'd be upset because that ruins the price of property. It lowers the value of property in the neighborhood. I don't think receiving a letter is enough. I think it deserves interaction. I don't, if it requires the city to get together and change an ordinance, it used to be prohibited. So if the city has to get together as a council and change that ordinance, well, do it. Don't need two years to talk about it. You just do it. And then parking enforcement can do their job. But I don't blame you for being upset. I wouldn't like it either.
Candidate Garcia.
You know, why are you parking your front lawn? Because there's no parking in the street. And they want to build more and bring more housing when there's no parking already. So then next year, we're going to be here and we're talking about parking in your living room. So of course, parking in the front lawn is a nuisance and we cannot allow that. It can't just be a letter. It's got to be a citation. And if you get your car towed off your front lawn, that's your fault. Okay? We cannot accept that. Listen, we have to set, we're a civilized society. Okay? We're going to set the rules and say, hey, you can have grass, you can't have a car on it. Okay? Now, if that person wants to take their front lawn and turn it into a driveway and looks decent, you know, maybe we can make some exceptions. But let's not forget, the reason that they're parking in their front lawn is because there's no parking on the street. Thank you.
Okay, this next question will start with candidate Hoskins. How can District Nine get a fair share of the city's infrastructure funding?
District Nine has to have a voice that represents District Nine. I'm a firm believer that it's, when you try to run the entire city, you can't do that when you're trying to be somewhat possessive of your own district. And I think that's what's been happening. I don't think our district has had a voice. It just hasn't happened. Now, the incumbent may say different, and I'm sure he will, but you have to be able to stand and fight for the people who got you where you're at. Not someone that's on Pacific Coast Highway. No. Not someone in District Four. You have to fight for your district. And that's what I will do for you.
Can you repeat the question?
I absolutely can repeat the question. And you, candidate Garcia, you'll be the next one answering. How can District Nine get a fair share of the city's infrastructure funding?
So this is where you have to pick a representative that puts you first. Doesn't put a political party first, has the courage to run as an independent and be the candidate for the community. I'm willing to take on the mayor. I don't, I don't care that I'm running with zero infrastructure and zero support from anybody. Because I believe, and I have the courage to do that. It is important to elect people who are willing to advocate for you to get their share. And if, and once again, it means taking on the mayor and taking on, taking them to the media and taking them to task. I am willing to do that. I have no skin in the game with any mayor, any political party. You are my political party. Thank you.
So we've made some of the changes necessary to make that happen. The City of San Diego had an antiquated and, to be honest, very discriminatory practice of locking up infrastructure funds and keeping them isolated to different pockets of the city. The city council approved a policy change to undo that so that we can begin distributing infrastructure dollars across the city. We did the same thing with parks. That was super, super important. It's going to take time before that, we'll start to feel the effects of that, but we made that change. And then you need someone who will fight for you, who's willing to have folks mad at me because I'm fighting for you. A lot has been made of some of the conflict on the city council. Why do you think that was, folks? Because when budget time came, I drew a line in the sand and said District Nine was going to get our fair share. I held the line with some of our allies and we took what we deserved. That is hard. That creates enemies at times, but I'm willing to do that because that was what was right because our community deserved it. I've more than shown my willingness to fight for this district and will continue to do so.
Okay, the next question, and we'll start with candidate Garcia. What would be your budget priorities this year specifically towards housing and infrastructure?
So infrastructure, I mean, we've seen what happens when you don't take care of infrastructure. It has to be number one. And it has to be at the most vulnerable areas if we're going to target any infrastructure. Because once I said, certain people, they just can't bounce back. And so we have to make that a priority. In terms of housing, my job is to work with the planning groups and work with the associations and make it so that we're building responsibly and reasonably and giving the incentives to the right people, not developers, but to you. So that's what I intend to do as your city council, is to focus on infrastructure that benefits, you know, the lowest of areas. And I want to put more money in the pockets of the residents rather than developers. Thank you.
Candidate Ela Rivera.
So the number one priority that I'm going to have is ensuring that we do all we can to support the folks who lost so much a couple of weeks ago. From an infrastructure perspective, I have been yelling from the rooftops about investing more in our stormwater system. I've called out the exact channels that flooded. The track record there is very clear. It's all in writing. I did that advocacy and we didn't get over the hump and get what we wanted. For housing, we're going to continue to focus on homelessness prevention. I mentioned earlier the Housing and Stability Prevention Fund, which my office led the creation of, is a shallow subsidy to seniors, families with children, and people with disabilities. Provide them just enough to make sure that they make ends meet and don't fall into homelessness. I believe that prevention is the key to solving San Diego's homelessness crisis. Programs like that have proven to work. They are working. And I want us to double down on that now that we've got the program going and it's having the effects that we desired.
Candidate Hoskins.
Yeah, density without common sense is ludicrous. And that's what's happening. We're focusing so much on density. Our infrastructure is so decapitated, it's not even working for us. Why are we trying to add density when it's failing us? That is what happened on Choyes Creek. It failed them. Because we're trying to add density everywhere else instead of focusing on infrastructure first. Now, I know someone may say, well, you always be chasing that cat then. No, I don't agree with that. But there are infrastructure that you need to have in place before you start talking density. Just out flat density. And that's what's happening. It's, and by the way, homelessness that you see has nothing to do with lack of housing. Let's just face it. It doesn't. Thank you.
Okay, next question will start with candidate Ela Rivera. How specifically would you address the housing crisis without destroying the existing character of San Diego neighborhoods?
Hilarious question, actually. I don't think, I don't think those things are mutually exclusive. We need to make it easier to build. We need to make it easier to build in the right places. We need to make sure it's easier to access financing. Folks, the idea that we're going to solve the housing crisis with any single policy or any single budgetary item is part of the reason why we're in this mess. It's going to take years and years and years of multiple levers being pulled to get where we want to go. If I had my way and could flip a switch and do it tomorrow, that would mean a massive investment in social housing so that we don't have to be dependent on corporate developers to build the housing that we need. It would mean that we're providing housing at all income levels for folks in publicly-owned housing that is a, is based on models that have been successful in parts of this country and parts of, you know, the parts of the world. We are advocating strongly for policy changes at the state level to do that. And we have led that charge and I will continue to do so. That's my ideal. We're just not there yet.
Okay, candidate Garcia.
Great question. So there's a couple of things. Number one, in terms of the ADUs, we need to make them so it's a single ADU. And once again, give the tax breaks to the property owner and not developers. Second, we target our transit areas. We look at every commercial building. We look at abandoned buildings and we see how high we can build up. Period. And then we go after the Airbnb people who are taking housing off the market because we have what's called straw hosts, where you're allowed to have one license. I'm fine if you have one license for Airbnb. But when you have 18, 20, and you're taking advantage of the system, you're taking homes off the market, that is unacceptable. So we have to go after those people. We can build responsibly. We can build reasonably here in San Diego. Thank you.
Candidate Hoskins.
Yeah, so I'm going to go out on a limb and say, first of all, housing is not a human right. I think that you should be able to work your way and get appropriate housing. If that's the case, let's just all go live in a tent. And eventually, the social housing that was mentioned, we'll just give you a place. No, it doesn't work that way. In the big, in the grown-up world, it does not work that way. You have to work. Decisions and choices equals, you know, accountability. I would not support anything that destroys single-family neighborhoods. I live in one. I love it. Down the street is an apartment complex. I can't park on my own street sometimes. That's why, you know, maybe they should park a mile away. That way they can walk instead of walking to the bus. Maybe that's what we should do. But no, we're not destroying single-family neighborhoods.
Okay, and the next question will start with you, candidate Hoskins. How would you deal with the city's homeless problem?
I have talked to thousands of homeless people. My 14 and a half years on walking our streets, our canyons, our alleys, I've talked to homeless people. I've tried to get them, people that want it, I got them off the street. But the people we see do not want that. There's nothing, you can make enough housing, and it's not going to get them off the street. So I do believe that the ban that went out was good. I think it needs to be more. I think it's a little too lenient. I'm not trying to say you have to criminalize homelessness. That's not what I'm saying. But if you don't get them to want to be better, they're not going to be better. That's like when you used to be able to arrest a drug addict. They got drug court. That was their path to get better. Now, it's not. It's just a freebie.
Candidate Ela Rivera.
So real-world experience was mentioned earlier tonight. And this is a topic I have real-world experience in. I've lived in a car. I've had my family rely on family members' couches or hotel rooms to get by. Homelessness is a result of a lack of housing and overwhelmingly begins because of a lack of economic ability to keep yourself in your home. Those are the facts. How we see people on the street today is not the way that they ended up on the street in many circumstances. The data shows us that homelessness is not correlated to drug addiction or mental health. It's correlated to housing cost and economic circumstances. Seniors are the fastest-growing group of people who are becoming homeless in California and San Diego. And I don't know about you, but I don't know about a bunch of seniors who have just lost their mind and became drug addicts. They can't afford to live here. So if we're going to get serious about this, let's have a real conversation. Let's not use homeless people as punching bags and provide them the support that they need to stay off the streets and get off the streets.
Candidate Garcia.
Yeah, so currently here in San Diego and in California, we have a policy of enablement as opposed to empowerment of getting people off the street. The streets cannot be an option. We have to take that away. Because we know if you live on the street, you're going to urinate, you're going to defecate, you're going to do other things on the street. That's not safe for anybody. A lot of people are going to talk about what's called a Housing First approach. The problem with Housing First is it requires for places to be easy to build and cheap. That is not Southern California. So we need to shelter first, and then from there, then we can triage and figure out what they need. My wife's a county social worker and she will tell you firsthand. You cannot put somebody in an apartment without addressing the underlying issues of drugs or mental illness. It's a disaster waiting to happen. So, and one of the things we need to realize, we have a budget deficit. And if we go into a recession, that's only going to exacerbate. So we have to be smart with the money that we have. We're going to have to regionalize our services and make that a priority. So thank you.
Okay, this next question will start with you, candidate Garcia. In your first year, which of the unresolved issues in Kensington from the current mid-city community plan would you address?
Ooh, so for those of you who don't know, I live in Kensington. We don't have any lights in my front house. My neighbor to the left got the car stolen. Neighbor to the right got their catalytic converter stolen. Our car got rummaged through. This is what happens when you don't take infrastructure serious and you don't listen to the people that got you elected. You want to know why your insurance is going up? Because people are robbing your cars. And guess what? They're not going to jail. There's no, there's no accountability. So we all pay for it. So the lights are a major, it's not just to, just to have a nice light. Yeah, of course I want nice lights. But it's a safety issue. My wife is out there walking the dog late at night, no lights. I don't want her doing that. We're getting our car stolen. It's a safety issue. The lights are going to be the first thing that I'm looking to take care of in Kensington.
Okay, next candidate Hoskins.
We've all heard about the lights all over San Diego. They just don't work. Well, they do work. We just can't get them to work. Lights at nighttime provide deterrents. I used to tell my daughter when she wanted to park a car, her truck, when she was in college, if you go park, if you go to the mall, park under a light. Park as close as you can to the building and park under a light. When she got her apartment in Oklahoma, I said, let's make sure that when you park on the street, park near a light. Make sure your car is empty so there's nothing to steal. Lights is a deterrent. And it's a, it's just as simple as you can imagine. When you want to clean your poop up outside and when your dog goes, turn the light on. You're not going to do it in the dark. We need lights.
Candidate Ela Rivera.
I'll just briefly start with the lighting issue. It's a huge priority. We've secured funding for lights. And as I mentioned before, city work gets done by city workers. And if you don't have city workers, the city work won't get done. So we, well, we funded, it was not a matter of not funding streetlights. It was a matter of not having the city workers there to do that work. We are now beginning to see the vacancy rates go down so that that work can happen. But I think the question was a little broader than streetlights. And as a fellow Kensington resident, I know that the issue that seems to unite the most folks is the issue of traffic safety, traffic and pedestrian safety. So we are working on that. on that. We're working at a granular level, kind of block by block, but also on a policy update, so that it isn't so damn hard for us to make streets safer every time that we want to do it. It shouldn't be a speed bump by speed bump, streetlight by streetlight, stop sign by stop sign battle to make our streets safer. It's got to be easier than that, and we're working on a policy change to make that happen.
Okay, this next question, we'll start with candidate Hila Rivera. How can the city increase awareness of the usefulness of gun violence restraining orders?
Raise awareness.
Raise awareness.
Yeah. Well, so this is one thing that I think the city attorney's office has done a fantastic job of. It has saved probably, you know, many, many lives, and certainly has made folks feel more safe, and that's incredibly important. I'm super supportive of the program. Any requests that the city attorney's office made to make awareness of that program more available, I would be supportive of. That, to me, sounds like a matter of budgeting. I've yet to see a budget request for that, but I've said no to. I'll continue to do it. Incredibly valuable program, super supportive of it. Don't even need a full minute to say how supportive of it I am.
Okay, candidate Huskins.
As a law enforcement officer for that 14 and 1/2 years, I know the importance of having gun prevention in that regard. So I'm totally for that. I think that it's important. And I think awareness is just something that has to be out there. If it's not on the budget, then put it on the budget. You don't have to have someone else to do that for you, but I'm for that. I'm also a big gun lover. I'm for your right to have a weapon. My weapons have not went off in my house for 60 years until I pulled the trigger, right? So there has to be accountability, and there has to be probably a little bit more of a check on who has firearms. But as far as awareness, I would definitely support that.
Candidate Garcia.
Yeah, so in terms of gun violence, you know, we definitely need to bring more awareness in, just at gun safety in general. Now, when it comes to gun rights, I am all for protecting the rights of legal, law-abiding gun owners. I'm a gun owner myself. Yes, guns can cause violence, but they also save lives. And so we've got to be, make sure that we carry that balance of understanding that we're going to protect people's rights, but at the same time, if there's a restraining order and we need to take that person's gun away because they're a hazard to somebody, that we have the courage to do that. But we got to make sure that we do it. There's got to be checks and balances. We can't go willy-nilly and just start taking people's guns away. So, thank you.
Okay, this will be the last question, and we're going to start with candidate Huskins. How can the effects of money and politics be reduced?
When money influence politicians, then we have an issue. So, we need to figure out a way, I would say more transparency, on who's funding who, who's giving to what candidate for donations, and follow the, follow the trace of the money. Follow the trace of the money. We have to hold people accountable. I think I've been saying that almost every time I speak. Accountability, accountability, accountability. If your elected official makes bad decisions over and over and over, or do not represent the people who put them in office, then you know what you have to do. It's pretty simple. Follow the money, hold our elected official accountable, and you'll resolve the issue.
Candidate Garcia.
Yeah, so we need election reform here in San Diego, and we can do that. Step number one is I believe we need to bring ranked choice voting here to San Diego. So that way, you can pick and rank who you want, so there's no spoiler effect, and it forces candidates to talk to everybody, not just to, right now, in the primary, you primarily have Democrats talk to Democrats, Republicans talk to Republicans. In a ranked choice voting environment, you force the candidate to talk to everybody. That's number one. Number two, we need a democracy dollars program here in San Diego, okay? The reason we have problems is because as a candidate, you are almost forced to go to big donors or align yourself with a political party. I'm not going to big donors. I'm not going to a political party. So I got to self-fund. Most, and guess who, and guess who is the candidate is beholden to? They're beholden to their political party, and they're beholden to their big donors. Democracy dollars program takes that away, puts the donations in your hand, and that way, we just have to go to you to get the funds. Thank you.
Candidate Hila Rivera.
Thank you. Fernando and I actually agree on a couple of things here. I supported ranked choice voting when it came to the Rules Committee. My colleagues did not. I support public fund financing of elections. I've been an advocate prior to being a city council member for those changes. Getting folks who are operating within the political system on board with that is hard. So I don't disagree with the value there. And we also need to be careful that we think about unintended consequences. We've talked about that a couple times tonight. And the reality is, and again, I support public financing, I'm for ranked choice voting, but just know that under a Citizens United framework, which is what we're operating in at a national level, we are almost certainly pushing dollars out of the campaigns, the candidates' campaigns, and toward independent expenditures used by PACs, which there is far less transparency. So, I'm for the change. I just want us to be eyes wide open, that that is not a panacea in any way whatsoever, and there would be some consequences on the other side as well.
Okay, before our candidates give their closing remarks, I want to thank you for being an attentive audience and asking some really good questions. Some key dates, ballots have been sent out by the registrar of voters, so you should have received them. If you didn't receive them, you can go to sdvote.com and check what's going on with your ballot. Election Day is March 5. If you want to know where your local drop box is or polling place, again, sdvote.com, and you can look it up by your address, okay? Some of you have gotten one of these. If not, they're at tables. It is a little bookmark for vote411.org. Three ones. No, two ones. Vote411.org. It is a League of Women Voters website. What you do is you put in your address, and it will give you your personalized ballot. Talk about the candidates, talk about the issues that you'll be voting on, okay? So, pretty handy. If you want to learn more about the work that we at the League do, go to lwsandiego.org. Okay? Now for the closing statements. The candidates will have two minutes for their closing statements, and we're going to go in the reverse order of the opening statements. So we are going to start with candidate Garcia.
Well, first of all, thank you for coming out. Thank you for putting on this event. These events are so important. So it just, it warms my heart, to be honest, to see these many people engaged in our democracy. You know, District Nine is a diverse district. I feel I'm a perfect candidate for this district because I have ties in all areas. My wife grew up in City Heights. My in-laws still live there, right by Azalea Park. Me and my wife, we live in Kensington. We understand the difference between these two areas. We understand that each area has its own different needs and wants. But the one thing they all want is they want a representative who listens to them. They want a representative who includes them. And they want a representative who respects them. I'm running to de-politicize City Hall so that we can focus on solutions. Now, here in San Diego, we talked about this already, but we have a strong mayor system. So it is so important for us to have somebody who's willing to take on the mayor. And I'm going to tell you this, my staff, when you ask them for help, they're not going to go, "Oh, the mayor. It's his office that handles it. We can't do nothing." Because if that's the case, why do you even have a city council? Think about it. And you know what? I'm tired of them always saying, "Go to the Get It Done app to solve all of your problems." Here's what we need to do. We're going to get it done by getting them out. So thank you very much.
Please hold your applause. Please hold your applause until we get through all of them. Next, candidate Huskins.
Yeah, thank you. So, we vote in 27 days. I asked that everyone research the candidates. Don't just listen to your best friend. He may not have your best interest at heart. But before you vote, just keep these little tidbits in your mind. No candidate up here knows more about public safety than I do. No one. It's a fact. I want to preserve single-family neighborhoods. I own a home. I want to preserve that. Small businesses are the backbone of our district. A lot of them are diverse small businesses. Many of them are closed down. We're going to change that. Don't be fooled. Homelessness is a huge moneymaker. Billions of dollars have been given to homelessness. When I'm your council member, unsuccessful programs will lose funding. I'm happy that I hosted and founded the Mid-City Homeless Coalition meeting. Many of you here are right now are attending. I am proud of that group, and I appreciate all that you do, and I'm honored to be a part of it. My, my communication, my belief is it's a two-way street. You will have my personal cellphone number. Most of you probably already do, anyways. My door will be open 24/7. You will see me. I will attend your community meetings with my staffers. I will be there. Because you're the one that will put me in office, and you're the one that I will represent. It won't be anyone else. It'll be you. And I will earn your respect. I'm not entitled to it. I will earn your respect. Last shout-out to the Salvation Army for me, this is not a time thing. They do a lot for the victims, so please make sure you go to their website and be kind and generous and help donate. I know I'm not supposed to say that, but thank you.
Candidate Hila Rivera.
I'm thinking a lot about where we were four years ago and where I was. And it was, you know, ballots were just going out, and I was an insurgent candidate, taking on an establishment candidate with a lot of money. I was running with the same values, supporting housing and working to address homelessness, environmental justice, safety and justice, economic opportunity that I'm running with now. I am proud of the steps that we've taken to address those issues since then. I know we have more work to do. But I'm also proud that I'm consistent. And four years ago, I held those values and was proud of them. This has to be said, there was a Trump Republican and somebody running for Congress who's now seeking, who are now seeking these jobs. And, folks, it's easy to move in a room and figure out what folks want to hear. It is much more difficult to say what your values are and stand on those, even when you're taking heat. You know what I stand for. You know why I stand for it. And I know that you don't always agree with me, but you know what I stand for. And I would think long and hard before we allow chameleons to trick us into believing that there's something that they're not, or that they won't slowly but surely mold themselves into what other folks want them to be. I do want to address one thing, because I've got staff in the room, and those folks work so damn hard for this community. They are not paid well. They put in hours and hours and hours. They volunteer on top of that. And to have that work dismissed, and Fernando, I know it wasn't personal, but it's personal to me, because those folks, they cannot tell you how hard they work. And they tell you to use the Get It Done app because that's what they're told you're supposed to do. But they're out there cleaning things up. They're out there on Sundays when they've worked 14 days in a row, and please do not disrespect my staff.
Okay, on behalf, on behalf of Neighbors for a Better San Diego and the League of Women Voters, I want to thank the candidates running for office and for attending our forum tonight. And now you can applaud. Thank you again for being here tonight.